So would you do the roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Ken Demirz. Robert De Sina. Jeffrey Demiris.
Here.
Anthony De Bona.
Here.
Louis Raza. Robert Ritalle.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan. Rachel was going to join us by Zoom. Are you here, Rachel? Not at this time, obviously. The next section is for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Hello, Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I see that you're going to be talking about the noise ordinance tonight. And I wanted to further comment about noise and about the fact that what's going on right now is nothing new. Because I was involved with someone down on Cedar Ridge. His name was Sebastian Douglas. I think that was about 2018 complaining about the USA hauling and the fact that they were running their trucks, which they still do at all hours of the night, keeping their children up with the beeping of the noise going in and out. Nothing's ever been done there, but Sebastian Douglas was fortunate enough to sell his home and move to Burlington, where he doesn't have to hear those type of things. When you held that public hearing, you were very specific about what the public hearing was for. It was about the noise ordinance, the current noise ordinance, and any comments people wanted to make on the current noise ordinance. I respected that, and that's what my comments were about. However, that meeting was out of control. You have allowed something to happen in this town where you've got businesses pitted against residents over noise issues. It's really pretty bad. I don't know. I'm not a Facebook person. However, people have showed me some of the things on Facebook, so I know I'm not seeing all of it because I don't troll it. I don't look at it. But I've gotten little things like, let's turn it up. Turn it up for those three people who complain. I mean, it's really ugly. And I'm going to blame you, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, for allowing that at that public hearing and not keeping control. I listened to people talk about the music, the food, how great the parties are. That's not what the point of that meeting was for. And yet, because of that meeting and what came out of that meeting, it's just gotten worse. It wasn't controlled. It wasn't kept to the fact of what you wanted to hear. I listened to a softball player from Woolkit putting in his two cents, and he was never stopped. Just because he plays softball for his sponsor is Hawkwood Shrinery. Why am I listening to someone from Woolkit talk about what's going on in Watertown? When I have tried to speak on Zoom meetings five times, I was muted during public comment against my freedom, my First Amendment right, five times. I'm a resident. I have things to say. Maybe you don't want to hear them. But I have the right, my First Amendment right, and it was compromised five times. So I'm not really happy at all about what happened. Obviously, that's what I'm talking about with that public hearing. Because as I see it, it was allowed to get out of control. It's now pitted residents and business owners against each other, and it should have never gotten to that point. Another thing is that you spent $12,000 of our money. You allotted $12,000 of our money for a study on the Sealy property, completely ignored by planning and zoning with their latest allowance for the zone change there. And yet, we spent, I think, $135 on a noise measuring device with the police department. Personally, I'd rather see you spend a couple of thousand dollars and get, what is it called? I'm sorry, a noise tech, someone who handles noise, the technology of noise, and I'm forgetting the term for that. Acoustical specialist, spend some money on that and find out if these readings that are being taken are being taken appropriately by an appropriate mechanism at the right times and at the right heights and levels. Because I've seen some of these readings that come in, and I can't understand how a reading could be taken when no music is going on and one can be taken when there is music, and they're the same. Something doesn't seem right there. So if we can spend the money to have a study done that can be ignored, can we spend a little more money to have something else looked into and take it a little bit more seriously? Because this is a major issue going on with people. And I don't, you know, like I said, I'm not a big Facebook person. Maybe some of you aren't either, but maybe you should really look into what I'm talking about. There's some really ugly things going on about this whole noise issue. So whatever you decide tonight, you really need to be thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Al Mickle, 95 Woodbine Avenue. I've got a long list of things to cover tonight. I hope you'll be patient. Now, this is under public comment. My first comment is I believe it should be changed to public participation. I've sat in front of the town council on many occasions, encouraging them to put public participation back on. In the olden days, it was on the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting, where people could participate, ask questions, get clarifications of any of the topics. And now we're not. We're just to have comments. So my comments might look like questions, and hopefully with a one-word answer, you might be able to answer them. But I have some other suggestions. If you feel it's unnecessary for open and transparent government, I would suggest you move the public comment to after the chairman's report or the town manager's report. That would make the comments a little more meaningful because we'll know what was going on in the meetings. Failing that, I would suggest you move the comments to the last item on the agenda. So we could comment on anything that happened during the meeting instead of being up here now before we know what's going to happen. So that's my comments on public comment. I'd rather have public participation. Now, you're going to talk about the hearing minutes. And you're going to, I think the hearing on the noise ordinance is labeled incorrectly. It should be labeled popularity contest hearing. We certainly know who the popular people are in town. They got many people out, rooting them on for their good, kind nature and their good business practices and their good food. They didn't say much about noise. The one last comment I think I have on the noise ordinance. Planning and zoning allows 80 decibels in their regulations, which can cause harm. So I think if they keep the 80 decibel level in their regulations, I think they should call it disturbing the peace. On the agenda tonight also, there's year-end adjustments. It doesn't have to be answered tonight, but if it could be, it would be nice. Will those year-end adjustments update the 2021 budget? Along the same lines, the $2,838,608, will that also be adjusted in last year's budget? I've mentioned this topic before, and I'm eagerly anticipating the new website. I think it's going to be very good. But I'd really like to know if the org chart is going to be on the website. If it's not, I've been disappointed, but I've been disappointed before. The next question is, if it's not there, how long will it take to get there? And if it gets there and something has to change, how long does it have to change? How long does it take to change? The org chart that's there now, I believe, was dated 1993. It's been there for a while. The last change that happened when they merged the park and rec, the park and the rec together. That's the last time that had been updated, and I don't remember how long ago that was. Now, I don't know if this is on the agenda, but there's been an architectural review done for the police station, an architectural review done for the senior center and community center. The town council had a, had reviewed that back in, I think it was, it was in March, I think. The town councils reviewed the police station. Lisa Carew reviewed the rec center and the senior center and the community center back in July. I think the police chief outlined some very important safety requirements that he needs to be rectified in that current old building. And I think it's about time we do something about that. And to start that off, I would certainly like to read both of those studies. We paid $10,000 for each one of them. So that's $20,000 worth of information I certainly would like to read. Now, one of the things that I look for in the charter is when there's a big hit against the general fund, the highest fiscal authority, which is the town council, should look for ways to restore that money back to its normal level, the current level. I couldn't find the exact words, but I'm fairly sure it's in there somewhere. Getting this year's budget passed with that much taken out of the general fund and with the future of the bidding process, I would imagine for the town hall, not the town hall, but the police station and the senior center. I think you have to think about how we're going to fund that stuff and how we're going to get the general fund back to where it should be. Now, I'm looking forward to hearing the answers to the emails that I sent to town council, like the total cost of the current town hall, even though it doesn't have the old town council pictures up yet. I hope it will be. And especially important, I think, is attending the town council's subcommittee meetings. I asked to be there for the Munson House study, but somehow I got forgotten about. But I certainly do want to be on the next two, especially the noise ordinance. I don't want to be on it. I want to be attending. I want to listen to what's going on. And second, last, I hope you can answer the question about the rent at the Sunset Grill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Richard Wick, Northfield Road. I'm going to talk about the noise ordinance. Surprise, surprise. In the last couple of weeks, it's become pretty clear that even the 55 decibel level in the state documentation is inadequate, given what we've learned about the way sound travels. There's been a good bit of information, technical information provided to you, the members of the council, by email pertaining to alternative ways of measuring sound over long distances. That suggests to me that the work that the subcommittee has to do with regard to bringing the noise ordinance into current reality is enormous and will unfortunately take a fair amount of time in addition to a lot of work. And I remember the days when we didn't need a noise ordinance. Remember the days when neighbors worked together rather than against each other? I remember the days when if somebody was bothered by somebody else, they'd work it out. They wouldn't invite government to get into their lives. My libertarian streak responds in a positive way to the idea of keeping government out of our lives whenever we can. Wouldn't it be great if, when we come up to the parking lot here and we see the sign that says, be kind, that we took it seriously and that we asked ourselves and everybody else in our community, why don't we start?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Glenn Claire, Natasha Town Road. I'd like to echo what Dick just said, and I'd like to add to it by submitting for the public record an article here that was written by two prominent Connecticut attorneys in 2016, entitled, for the Connecticut Law Review, entitled Noise Nuisance: A New Twist on an Old Law. Tremendous to what he just said, we have a situation where the noise is traveling in a way that confounds common sense. I live, if you triangulate a mile roughly from each venue, now I get it in stereo. So why does sound travel like it does according to the articles? And you have some of these in your possession now. I'm going to add this too. It has to do with atmosphere. It has to do with lensing, wind, topography. All these things contribute to the sound. You can take a decibel meter, like you all have purchased, and go to the property boundary, stand there, and it may be it's 55 decibels or 77 decibels, whatever it is. But that sound travels, whether it's off the walls or off the hill sides, off the pond in front of the grill. It travels, and it magnifies in some instances, not all the time. The many weekends, I'll be there and I'll just hear a rumble. The other times, I hear every single thing. I hear people laughing a mile away. I hear cars door slam. I hear the music, of course, which is loud, and it's getting louder. We're not trying to be unreasonable. We don't want to shut anybody down. We don't want to cause any problems with the town. All we want to do is be able to be in our backyards or to open our windows on a nice evening and not have noise intrude. We want to be able to watch TV or meet with our friends on the porch and talk. It's not the same thing. I'm not opposed to music. I like music. But I don't want to have it in my face all the time. I also want to be in a position where I can get away from it if I want to or turn the radio off. If you sit in your yards and you're listening to someone talking at your fence line loudly, you know, if that went on once in a while, you'd accept it. But if it went on every single weekend, spring, summer, and fall, and now they're trying to up the amount of venues that they have, the number, I mean, this is beyond frustrating. Why is it a good idea to have rock concerts in the middle of a residential neighborhood? It wasn't that way when I moved here. It wasn't that way for most of the people who live here. But now that's something that we're being asked to accept. I oppose that. I'm not trying to shut anybody down. I'm just asking you to read this article, understand what's involved, and find a way to remediate it. You know, or why do we even have to have amplified music? These are small venues. Why can't they just have acoustical music? We had no problems with that, and that's what they began with. But things have slowly escalated throughout this time period, and they're getting louder and worse and more frequent. This isn't fair. Thank you for listening to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll close public participation for public comment. Do we have a motion for the regular meeting minutes?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 19th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any corrections or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the regular meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? We have two extensions. I don't know what that means. We don't have enough to pass, but no, we'll have to put it on the agenda again. You were absent from the public hearing portion two, correct? So the same thing we had. Okay. We'll put both of those on the next agenda. You were at the public hearing. Okay, so good to motion for your.
I move to approve the minutes from the public hearing on July 19th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have a comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining? All right, so the minutes on the hearing pass, the minutes on the regular meeting does not have sufficient votes. Moving on to the chair's comments. We have a resignation letter from Deborah Hughes as a member of the Public Building Committee. It's dated July 30th, 2021, and will be attached to the minutes of the meeting. We are going to set up a committee to review, make recommendations, et cetera, with regard to the American Rescue Plan funds that the town is going to be receiving. We see nine people on that committee. Three members from the public. Two council members. And the remainder would be town employees such as our finance director and town manager. Jonathan is asked to be one of the council members. So we will be contacting various individuals to set up a date and a time to begin that discussion and contacting members of the public that might wish to serve on that committee. The town manager, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, Reuben, and members of the Watertown Town Council. I'd just like to update you on COVID-19. The governor, on August 5th, 2021, extended executive order 13A through September 30th, 2021. This means that municipal leaders are now the decision-makers in determining policy for mask wearing. The governor's executive order mandates that masks must be worn regardless of vaccination status as follows. Unvaccinated people must wear masks while indoor public places. Everyone must wear masks regardless of vaccination status while inside certain settings, such as healthcare facilities, facilities housing vulnerable populations, public and private transit, correctional facilities, schools, and childcare pursuant to an order issued by the commissioner of the Department of Public Health. Masks are not required outdoors. Individuals, regardless of their vaccination status, must wear masks indoors if required in the commissioner's order for special settings or by a municipality. Businesses, private property owners, and state and local government offices may require masks to be worn by everyone inside of their own facilities. I am monitoring the COVID-19 variant spread, and at this time, I see no reason to change our current policy, which all persons entering town public buildings must wear a mask, except for employees that have proven vaccination. If we see a continual uptick in this variant spread, then we will ask the town employees to wear masks while in the hallways of the building. We've set up stations with masks and hand sanitizers at the entrances of the town hall to assist visitors and be compliant with our policy. Negotiations, white-collar negotiations, we're beginning to culminate that negotiation, and hopefully I'll be bringing an agreement to the council in the near future, hoping for September. Communications union negotiation will begin this week. Our emergency management director, Chief Bromley, is updating our emergency operation plans, and we are planning a tabletop exercise. Chief Bromley will be contacting our Region Five coordinators for their support, and I anticipate a late fall exercise. I will keep you updated in case you'd like to be included in that exercise. Our current part-time assistant building official position is vacant, as you're aware. The position was evaluated, and it is clear that a part-time position is sufficient to manage the department's workload in addition to our building official. There is a lack of available assistant building officials as well as building officials in Connecticut. So we've reached out to Thomason, and we're discussing a cost-sharing position. And I'll bring you more details as we start to work that through. I've made an offer in regards to the public works director's position. I'm still waiting for an answer. Community events, the Watertown Fall Festival is scheduled for September 18th, 2021 at Veterans Park, and the Watertown Police Department charity golf tournament is, will be held on October 1st, 2021 at Crest Brook. I think Mr. Mickle has been reading my notes. I'm going to answer quite a few of his questions this evening. Our website is launched over the weekend. We are planning to make it live Wednesday, August 18th. It does look great. Please take the time, make yourself familiar with it. I think you'll be happy with the results. While our minutes have not been carried over to the website, we're still working on trying to get them all over, but we do have a good portion of those minutes transferred already. If you recall, or if you're not aware, we had a small cities grant in place. We have about $200,000 left in that grant setup. We've reached out to the, the Community Development Block Program, and we're going to take that $200,000 and re-advertise that and make those monies available to our townspeople. Bonding. Suzanne Pone and I are working with our bonding agent to provide a big picture for the potential capital projects that we've been discussing. Even municipal center, the police department, school infrastructure repairs, and the fire department ladder truck. If you remember during your meeting in February with our bonding agent, 2022 and 2023, we're expecting $15 million to be dropping off our bonding debt structure. This drop-off will allow for funding of some or parts of the capital projects. We are reviewing what bond debt will be dropping off in 2023 and beyond so that you can utilize that information in structuring, maybe a new bond package. Our organizational chart, we have worked through the organizational chart and it made some changes to reflect what actually is in place. I will present an updated chart for the council to review when we get closer to fulfilling the appointment of the town clerk's position. So we can only make one change. There is some issue with creating the chart itself. We had created it in Word, and that's not a simple task. So we've acquired some software to more readily be able to make these changes as needed. That'll be a matter of.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Under new business, item A.
I move to refer the modifications of the noise ordinance to the ordinance subcommittee for a recommendation to be considered at the October 18th, 2021 town council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. What's happening is this goes to ordinance. They discuss the changes, the. They discuss the changes that they might propose. They will be meeting with Attorney Fitzgerald, who will be working with us on that and then bring that back to the full council on the 18th. And I believe we will need another public hearing after that. Anyone else have any questions? All those in favor of the motion to move it to the ordinance subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Item B.
I move to approve an appropriation amount of $6,139.41 from the general fund to the public, sorry, to the police department overtime account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I just wanted to add that it's dealing with reimbursements from, for DUI enforcement and littering speeding in cell phone.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Item C.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between nine items to close out fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the transfer of funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Item D.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation amount of $9,800 for tax returns.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item D.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax returns.
And we need a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Everyone responded positively, so the motion passes unanimously. And now we move into executive session. Yes.
I move in. I move to enter into executive session with the town council members, president, town manager, assistant town manager slash finance director and town attorney to discuss the sale of town property formerly known as the town hall at 37 The Forest Street.
And we will attempt to reach Rachel Ryan by phone when we are in the meeting.
I don't think she'll be available.
She's not going to be available? All right, because she didn't come in until.
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's adjourn to the back room.
Second. Second. Aye. Aye.
Everybody's in favor?